Get this bad boy going here. Uh, call this, call the uh... Uh, can you hear me there?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna call to order the October eighth, twenty twenty-four City of Coos Bay Planning Commission Meeting. Uh, do we have any public comments not pertaining to the, uh, public hearing this evening?
Thank you all. Uh, Dean Lundie from, uh, from Empire there. I'm still pounding the, the, uh, the connect the boardwalk bike, uh, bike paths. We've been in, um, in contact with ODOT, uh, with, um, Glenn Pedersen and, and John Luzur. Um, and I just drove across from the waterfront area there on Front Street, across Market Street to come up into town, and it was dangerous even in a car. And so these guys, they don't, we don't even have what they call an Abbey Road, you know, some, something that shows that there's a, that there's a crosswalk there. Evidently, evidently, uh, uh, no names, but, uh, it sounds like Jennifer Worthing has been in touch with these guys. Uh, they're, they're, they're coming up with a plan to connect the Sherrill deal up the, up, uh, you know, and, and, uh, the, the little halfway across Market Street. That's one oh one, but there is, there is a, a control on the, on the southbound side of it. But the northbound side of one oh one, even they're stopped, the traffic is stopped like Freddie Meyer's area. And so you think, okay, they hold back the whole, uh, gung-hoard, right? The moment they hold them back, you go to cross and somebody's making a left turn and they're looking to the right and they run you over. Uh, so they're working on, um, Market Street. That, I think that's the key that we're waiting for, to go up to Mingus Park. And the, and that last little fifty feet of the front street to the boardwalk is ugly railroad tracks and gravel. So that's, I'd love to see us, uh, smooth that out and then continue on north. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, Mike Powder up in Empire on Main Street. And I'm just trying to bring back a memory again, just to make sure it doesn't get forgotten. Um, but I'm talking about when the, when they rescinded Resolution twenty-one oh one. Uh, we got a neighbor wants to put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house on his property up there. Um, but the requirement is he has to spend half a million dollars on a, on a sidewalks and a road on a dead end that we don't need. So it's still in limbo. He doesn't know what to do with himself. Um, so we're hoping somebody can get the ball rolling and, uh, work out, either tell him he can't build unless he builds a street or work with him. And I think we should work with him if we want to boost the area. But, um, another thing somebody was trying to say to me too is how the heck do you get a half a million dollar loan to put in a street? A bank will not lend you that money. So if anybody wants to do it, it's gotta come out of their savings. You know, there, there's no bank lends you money to build a street. So it's something that needs to be addressed soon. And this is a dead end street, dirt road. Guy wants to build a hundred and a quarter, two hundred thousand dollar house, but he can't take a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage on it.
Mike, what street?
This is on, um, it's Main Street and Cameron. And you've been out there. I think you've helped me fix my tractor once years and years ago. Yeah, yeah, you delivered some stuff and I couldn't give a tractor going, you helped me. Yeah. Um, yeah, it's seven oh six South Main, it's Cameron and, uh, and, uh, yeah, so. And I'm gonna add to Dean too. I was down at the bike shop on Sunday and since I broke my hip, I already hobble along. And from the bike shop, I wanted to go to get, you know, down there by the food trucks. I went across the street and get to, um, the, oh, Market, whatever it is, the, uh, but whole, Best Foods of Whole Food, whatever it is. Anyway, um, I had, I had to cross the street. Now, I'm not gonna walk all the way downtown and cross over at the, there, and I'm not gonna walk all the way to the whatever. So I, I wait until there's no traffic. By the time I was three quarters way across, a truck comes charging up on me to teach me a lesson that I should move along the road a little faster. When I come back with my groceries, still crossing again, by the time I'm three quarters over, another vehicle was right on me. And, you know, I'm, I'm moving as fast as I can, but that really needs some, uh, that needs some serious attention to. The speeds are way too fast. And also, um, just on that stretch, which I call the suicide run, you know, that's where you start turning that corner to the traffic light at the, uh, Bay Village. That stretch, they're still forty-five miles an hour. You know, we've had, I've heard there's ten accidents there, one fatality, and yet it's still forty-five miles an hour and it's still, you know, it's still a racetrack. So I don't see anything happening there, but, uh, just putting that reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, where does that authority fall on one oh one? That's, that's an ODOT issue there, correct?
ODOT's jurisdiction on one oh one, yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment not pertaining to the public hearing this evening? Okay, uh, hearing none. We'll move on to item three here. Uh, consideration of Planning Commission member appointment to the city's Economic Opportunities Analysis and Economic Development Strategic Plan Public Advisory Committee.
Yes, Planning Commission. Um, the city received, uh, grants funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Ford Family Foundation to do this work that would update our, um, economic element of the comprehensive plan. So providing an updated economic opportunities analysis and also a second step, come up with a economic development strategic plan. And that's kind of the implementation, trying to move, um, progress forward. So we're in the initial phase of that and we're trying to establish the project advisory committee. And there'll be plenty of representative, um, folks on that group, but we wanna get one representative of Planning Commission to, um, help inform the work. And so council is already, uh, on their end, appointed a representative. And now tonight, we're asking Planning Commission to appoint a representative. And so, and what that looks like is maybe participating in a total of four meetings over the course of the next year and providing input. Um, if Planning Commission, if anybody is so inclined.
I think this is where we get to pick from somebody who's not here and volunteer them, right?
You know, Mr. Marino.
Jeff would be great at that. He would be, yeah, yeah. Volunteer.
I'm already on the Barks Commission.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Berg, can you hear, um, Commission is talking about the potential of nominating Commissioner Marino?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we ask Mr. Marino, Jeff Marino, to be the advisor to the economics strategic plan of public advisory committee.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yeah, we have the motion, we have the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I think we just fallen told Mr. Marino of it, who's gonna be participating in this.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Moving on now to number four, which I think is why a lot of us are here this evening. Uh, we're gonna now open the public hearing on land use application number one eight seven dash two four dash zero 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 one seven four dash PLNG. Proposal to adopt the Empire Area Blueprint by resolution and to approve and adopt by ordinance related amendments to the City of Coos Bay Transportation System Plan and Municipal Code. Today is October eighth, twenty twenty-four. It is six ten P M. Uh, my name is Josh Stevens. I am the Planning Commission Chair. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council on this application based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be conducted in accordance with Coos Bay Development Code and State Law, ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven. Specifically, city staff will first present the staff report and recommendation. For public testimony, I will first ask to hear from people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I will then ask to hear from those in opposition to the proposal. Finally, people who have neutral comments or questions about the proposal, neither for nor against, will have the opportunity to speak. City staff may then present additional material and recommendations based on the public testimony. After each presentation, I may ask for questions from the Commission. For anyone wishing to speak, we are asking you to use the sign up sheet that has been provided. When called upon to speak, you must state your name and address for the public record. We ask that each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You will be informed when your allotted time is expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked to immediately conclude his or her remarks. To minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group with other members of the organization standing to show their support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of a Planning Commission member to respond to a question. Thank you for your cooperation. Uh, Planning Commission is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts that we have with the proposal or applicant. That is whether we have any financial or other personal interest in the proposal and whether we have spoken with anybody about the proposal outside of this hearing. Do any Commission members wish to make disclosures?
No.
No, not here.
Okay. Are there any challenges from the audiences to conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or bias related to any member of the Planning Commission? Okay. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substant, substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the notice of public hearing, the written staff report, and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to this application. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on that issue. Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council for a final decision. A decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. We will now hear from staff applicant who will go over the staff report. Joseph?
Yes, and just a reminder, Planning Commissioners, you'll have to get really up close to your speakers so that the audience can hear. Um, thank you, everyone. So tonight, we are conducting the public hearing to consider, one, adoption of, um, the Empire Area Blueprint uh, by resolution, just as a guiding document. And two, associated text amendments to both our transportation system plan and to the city's code that would help facilitate recommendations set forth in the plan. Um, so I'll just kind of break that down in a little more detail. Again, there's the Empire Area Blueprint. This is a long range planning document. Took about a year for the city to put it together with the, um, help of a consultant and also a project advisory committee. And the legislative text amendments that we're proposing today to go along with it, just briefly, will be in our transportation system plan to update the tier-two project ID CB dash fourteen, which, um, involves the Newmark, Newmark Avenue, um, road diet, lane reconfiguration. And also to incorporate the Empire Area Blueprint Transportation Projects into the Street Connectivity Plan section. And then there are some text amendments to the code. One would be to update mobility targets in section eighteen point one five point zero zero five to be consistent with those set forth in our adopted transportation system plan. So it's not making any changes. It's just updating the code to be consistent with our adopted plan. We wanna clarify in table seventeen point two three zero point zero two zero that within the study area, uh, residential use would be allowed within an entire building. Currently, a portion of the ground floor has to be reserved for commercial space. But we want to say, um, in for housing, that we wanna let the whole entire building be occupied for residential use. We also want to look at figure seventeen point three three zero point zero one zero, um, C. It's our exempt parking area with a cap. We wanna look at expanding that area to encompass the whole project area and what that area, uh, does in the area, any use, any uses. Nobody has to provide off-street parking until your use requires more than twenty spaces. And then at that point, the use needs to provide on-site parking. So we want that to be true for the whole project area. We wanna align the uses allowed in the Hollering Place Zone District under chapter seventeen point two five zero to be the same as those envisioned in the Empire Area Blueprint. And also to simplify development standards in that zone district. Currently, it's very kind of convoluted and complex, very specific to what you can and can't do and how you have to get land use approvals. And we haven't seen any interest to date, to develop it. And we know through this process that people would love to see that area, um, developed. And finally, we want to repeal seventeen point three one six of the code, which would remove the architectural design standards for that area, which we've learned are a barrier to development. And so it's just another way to make it easier for people to develop, uh, bring life to the area. So a little bit of background, I can get this out of my way. In fall of twenty twenty-two, City Council initiated this long-range planning effort. They, they completed something similar for the Front Street. And they said, hey, we wanna show the same love to Empire. And so that's what this Empire Area Blueprint is doing. It's really looking at how can we boost the economic development potential and better transportation connections throughout that project area? So that was the goal of this work. Again, um, I mentioned the project has been informed, sorry, by a project advisory committee. And that included community members, uh, residents, property owners, business owners, affected agencies. That group met a total of five times over the last year, and they provided input. We also had stakeholder feedback, one-on-one interviews with property owners and businesses who provided input. We held individual meetings with representatives of the Kokeel Tribe and also of the Confederated Tribes of the Coos Lower Amquah and Sayu Slott Indians. Planning Commission conducted two work sessions in twenty twenty-three. And then a joint City Council Planning Commission work session was held just this last April to, to look at what the preferred alternative was and to give further input to refine that. And so all of that feedback to date has been incorporated into the draft plan that is in the, um, packet tonight. And again, the amendments that come along with it are, uh, intended to facilitate, to implement the recommendations set forth in the plan. So, my screen sharing is bothering me. So I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of detail on the plan itself. We've, as I said, had lots of meetings. Um, Planning Commission has, uh, talked about it in the recent past, but I do wanna give you kind of a high level overview. So this map on the screen shows the kind of project area, which includes the Newmark Corridor in Empire as well as the waterfront. And what you can see is that there are, if we start on the east end of Empire, there are street improvements proposed from Norman to Ocean Boulevard. And then, once you get to Ocean and you go down further to, um, Cameron Street, there are some, a lane reconfiguration is proposed, mm, kind of with the intent to help slow down traffic, make it safer in the area. Also help get people to slow down and stop and see what's happening, you know, are there things they wanna stop and do? You'll see along the Main Street Corridor, there aren't any changes to the lanes proposed. We, we realize that traffic, um, right there is pretty tight and we don't wanna make things too much worse. There's a planned roundabout at, uh, Newmark and Empire. And then you get to the waterfront and you'll see that they call out the Hollering Place. There's also some, the purple, there's envisioned to have mixed use on that site. And then the larger property, um, they envision residential being maybe a likely highest and best use. These are just visions and what the public has said we'd love to see. None of this has happened, no changes are happening with this proposal. Um, though zoning is not changing, we're not planning to make any lane configurations tomorrow. This is just, this is the plan and it would serve as a guiding document and also maybe set up a phase two. Do we wanna talk about changes on the waterfront? Then we need to talk to the property owners. We need to get, um, more involved and get their buy-off. Right now, that's not where we're at. We're just, here's our vision. Um, I included, just with respect to traffic transportation, uh, called out the traffic benefits and impacts just to show, the consultant broke it down from a no-build scenario, if we didn't make any transportation changes, to a, uh, build with the waterfront and all the lane reconfigurations. And what they found is if you don't build, you make no changes, you're not really gonna notice any traffic growth. The traffic speeds aren't gonna change. You're not gonna have bike lanes at all on Newmark. And you're gonna have a level, a high level of uncomfortableness for vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, right? So that's existing conditions. If the waterfront were to be developed, but you didn't, you still didn't make any of the improvements, the changes on the streets, you might start to see traffic delays, um, for people wanting to make lefts from the side streets onto Newmark. But your traffic speeds wouldn't be expected to change. You still wouldn't have bike lanes. You'd still have an uncomfortable level of stress for the pedestrian, the bicyclist, the vehicle. And in that scenario though, the city could still mitigate traffic operations through access management. And then you have the full, the full deal, you improve the waterfront, and you complete the lane reconfigurations. You would expect that traffic delays may increase for those users on the side streets onto Newmark. And, but the traffic speeds are also gonna be expected to slow down. You'd end up, you'd have that, the bike lanes, so you'd get that additional, uh, mode of transportation. You'd improve the comfort level for users and you would still have the city looking at if, when you need to mitigate traffic through access management or other traffic control measures. So I just wanted to give that broad overview. And again, the plan itself is just a plan. We're not making any of these changes at this time. A lot of what these plans do is set the city up maybe for funding opportunities in the future if there, uh, something comes, um, up as an opportunity. But, mm, right now, it's just a plan that we're looking for council, um, to adopt. So I wanna go over the text amendments just so everybody can see what does this mean? What is this actually doing? So the first one, we'll talk about the transportation system plan. And in the T S P, there is a tier-two project. It involves the Newmark Avenue Lane Reconfigurations. And currently, in the black is what the language currently reads. Restripe Road to Provide Bicycle Facilities Road Diet. And what we wanna do is add the red, consistent with the Empire Area Blueprint. And essentially, that doesn't make any changes to what is already in the T S P and planned for that facility on Newmark, but adding that line is like further support for if and when that becomes a opportunity. You know, we've looked at it with the transportation system plan. We've looked at it through the Empire Area Blueprint. The public is on board with that. And so we go bring it to funders and we say, hey, look, this is, you know, this is really something that's been considered. And I just wanna point out that the tier-two projects, right now, they're not funded projects. They're ones that people really wanna see, but they're not funded. So it's not like making this change in the T S P is gonna mean tomorrow the city's going out and putting bicycle facilities on Newmark. It's not gonna happen. They're not funded. They need to be funding, funded. Um, the next piece of that T S P update, Transportation System Plan update, there's a kind of a project sheet in the appendix of this plan. And it has a, a bunch of kind of bullets about, uh, facts about the project. And you'll see at the bottom, the text amendments would, uh, add two lines to say that this project is included in the Empire Area Blueprint. So again, just calling out, we've thought about this in more than one respect. And that the design consideration should consider maintaining the free eastbound right turn lane. And that was something that the public, you know, is, really wants to see traffic still moving and feel comfortable making turns. So that speaks to that. Feel free to stop me at any time if you wanna ask a question, or we can ask questions at the end. The next bit in the transportation system plan, there's a section on street connectivity. And it just speaks to really, the goal here is to make our streets a connected system. And that includes sidewalks, bicycle facilities. And we're gonna add, uh, I'm not gonna read all of this, but a paragraph specifically about the Empire District that just really beefs it up and, and supports, um, connectivity in that area. So I'm gonna jump to the code, the city's code. And the first change we're proposing is in, um, section eighteen point one five point zero zero five. This is, relates to our transportation facilities. And we want to clarify the level, the definition of the level of service just to align with what's in our adopted transportation system plan. And so you'll see the red strikeout text is what we'd wanna remove. And so your, um, level of service would be based on average seconds of delay. And we'd wanna maintain a level of service of D during the peak hour of the day, not just the evening peak hour of the day. So there's that. The next text change is in table seventeen point two three zero point zero two zero. This is in our chapter on the Commercial Zone District Standards. And it's the table for allowed uses. So again, we would, we would have that residential uses are allowed with a little caveat that in the Empire Area Blueprint study area, they're allowed in a hundred percent of the building. And then we'll give a reference to what that study area looks like, so that you, you'll know. This figure is the current, um, boundary of the parking area, the exempt parking area with a cap. You'll see, I don't know if it shows, this is Newmark right here. And it's bounded by, can't read that very well, Main Street and Empire Boulevard. What we wanna do is update that to be the, what this dark hashed line is the study area. So you're going from New, Newmark from the waterfront, all the way down the corridor to Norman Avenue. And so those properties would be brought into this exempt parking area with a cap and be able to have the same benefits as everybody else. And our Hollering Place Zone District, we want to clean that up, make it easier for, for A, staff to implement, and B, the customer to be able to come in and know what they can develop, what the process is. So we're proposing to remove standards that require special approval processes and specific design features for development in that zone. And we wanna establish that any use permitted outright or conditionally in a, the commercial zone, which is pretty much what the Empire Corridor along Newmark is, any use allowed there and also in the overlaying Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan District for that property would be allowed in the Hollering Place Zone. It's a very small piece of property that this zone district covers. And also that the development and lot standards for that property would be the same as those for what applies in a commercial zone. So it's really simplifying and saying, what happens at the Hollering Place property is the same as what's allowed in the commercial zone on the corridor. And... And it removes some stringent processes like the requirement to do a planned unit development, the requirement to have certain very particular sizes and types of developments, the requirement to have, um, higher level, uh, qualified professionals provide design work, just makes it easier for development to happen at that site. And then last but not least, again, the Empire Waterfront Settlement Design Review. It's a whole chapter on architectural design review standards. It's not very clear and objective. It, um, it's a barrier to development. It requires a lot of extra features that cost money and also time in a process to get approval. So part of this proposal is to repeal those standards. So this is a legislative land use amendment. It requires certain notice. It, um, involves public comment. We did provide notice to the Department of Land Conservation, as well as interested parties. Notice was posted here at City Hall, posted on the city's website, as well as in the city's newsletter and in the World Newspaper. So we received comments after the staff report from just a handful of, uh, people. The, the Soss Brothers own the largest industrial piece of property on the waterfront. And they voiced that they don't have any real objections to the proposal. And I'll add that they were involved at the beginning as a stakeholder. So they were involved up front and then at the tail end, um, reiterating, they don't have any objections, but they really want to be able to allow industrial use on the site and that is fair. But they're open to mixed use also. And so in that conversation, reiterating, nothing changes with the zoning of that property or the allowed uses today. We continue to have industrial use allowed. And if in, when in the future, we want to pursue looking at how that might change, there would be another big process and involvement with the property owner. The Fair Housing Council of Oregon reached out. They also said they don't have any objections to the proposal, but they recommended we beef up our goaltend finding to add what's called a needs statement. And so I've drafted that language. I sent it to Planning Commission. That will be included in revised recommended findings for council. And it pretty much just says, calls back to your housing needs analysis, talks about what type of housing is needed and, um, addresses whether or not the proposal impacts that negatively or positively, or not at all. And then the Community Coalition of Empire, they've been very involved throughout this process. And they submitted a, what they call a tandem goal plan, a list of items that they'd really like to see, um, addressed in the area. And that was provided to Planning Commission before tonight's meeting. And it's something that Planning Commission can certainly consider. I, uh, might recommend maybe attaching their, their list of, uh, goals and plans as an appendix to the Empire Area Blueprint. That way it's there, people can reference it and see, um, so that, and I'm sure we'll have people talk about it tonight. So in conclusion, Planning Commission can recommend that the city do, one, adopt the Empire Area Blueprint by resolution. And then, two, approve the land use application based on the information presented, including the recommended findings, subject to that addition of a goaltend needs statement in the findings. And that's in your, your packet exhibit four of attachment A. So, well, that would be, I think, the end of what I have to say and open it up for comment questions.
Before I open it up for public comments really quick, did-
Would you please use your microphone?
Yeah. Sorry. Before I open that up, um, did we do an actual roll call at the beginning of the meeting and do, should we get that on the record really quick?
Yeah, because we're on video, it's not such a big deal. And, but I can go through it for sure, if you want.
Either way, I just wanted to, I know we heard Jim on the phone and-
Yep. All just real quick, Jim, Commissioner Berg is on the phone. Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Davis are here in person. Commissioner Marano, um, Commissioner Geary and Commissioner Terry are all relayed, they would not be in attendance tonight.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. We'll now hear from any person, uh, in support of the proposal. Please state your name and address for the record. And as, as a reminder, you'll have three minutes, uh, for your support. Any, any in support of this proposal?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you all. And Commissioner Berg, good to hear your voice, given your health challenges. Um, my name is Roger Gould. I'm an attorney here in town and I represent Soss Brothers in this matter. And I'm here to, to supplement and expand a bit upon the, the prior comments that have been received by the city, uh, from the company. A- as has been stated, Soss Brothers is in, in general support of the proposal, uh, that you are considering this evening and your recommendations onto the city council. Uh, Soss Brothers has, uh, plays a very prominent role in this whole process because it is the owner of a good chunk of that waterfront property. Uh, I, I want to correct a little bit of what the, the, uh, Empire, uh, Area Blueprint states about Soss Brothers. And, and Soss Brothers, in fact, has been engaged in different conversations with different folks over the last few years with respect to potential uses of that property, um, industrial type. But as we all know, uh, what happens in this community, development wise, depends a lot about, on, on who from out of the area is interested in coming here and partnering with the city and with, uh, other local, uh, entities to do development. Soss Brothers stands very ready and willing to be flexible in considering any type of development of that property that is deemed to be beneficial to the area economically or environmentally. Uh, so, uh, again, the, the company stands i- in, in support of this. And, and I might add, personally, I'm very supportive of the, uh, on behalf of Soss Brothers for the por- portion of this proposal that repeals the Empire Waterfront, uh, Settlement Design Review Standards. The key here is to have flexibility for the city and for developers. And to anything we can do to increase flexibility with respect to development is a good thing. And we see this, uh, this proposal that's before you to be, uh, a good thing in that it expands flexibility in the future development, both from, uh, future design standards and concepts. That's amazing, what is concepts, that, uh, people like you that are on the Planning Commission and on the City Council, uh, think about and adopt. And what developers then, how they mesh together is, it, it has to be as, as seamless and as, as painless for all involved with a view towards, uh, furthering these concepts that we all work towards achieving and developing the community. So Soss Brothers stands in support of, uh, what you're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in support of the proposal?
I am, but I'm not on the list. Well, we would, but I didn't. My name's Tom Greaves. I'm a resident of Empire District of Cuse Bay. Please don't start my time till I'm done writing my name. See, I came up here because I was at the early Planning Commission meeting, gosh, it must've been at least a year ago, and mentioned, uh, if you see something, say something. That's the new s- saying around town. And so I started saying how the boat ramp needed expanded into that Hollering Place lot. Subsequently, unless something's changed, it's in your packet, in a picture, drawn there. A half parking lot, half food trucks, and the front end of it's a dog park with a grassy stretch. And so a whole bunch of time and energy was spent on that. Pictures, which I hope that you gave to them, if you maybe, if Chelsea did give you all the pictures that were sent in to support that notion. Letters, uh, based on interviews I did with people out there that filled that lot. Again, this year, by the way, during the salmon run, that lot was completely covered with boats, trailers, trucks, trailers, people crabbing, uh, people that came here is from as far away as Hawaii, second time in this year, the second year in a row that I interviewed those people. And, um, to hear tonight that part of the code changes would include something specifically to help market the Hollering Place out is a little bit unnerving for me, sitting here because of the time and effort that was spent on getting that in the plan and it's drawn in the plan and in the blueprint plan. And so I would like you guys to really think about whether or not, uh, I guess if you adopt that change in code, it'll just be saying that, that won't become an expanded boat ramp. We'll keep that boat ramp small forever. Uh, we, we won't think that those boaters are important that cover that lot when it's completely full, which is several times a year. I know that it's closed part-time of the year, but my next idea is to get rid of the boomstick and put in a proper breakwater and leave that boat ramp open twelve months out of the year. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Uh, any, any other persons in support of this proposal? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, now if we hear from any person in opposition to the proposal, uh, please, uh, come up to the podium and state your name and address for the, the record. And as a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
Did you like reading the plot? I'm kind of putting this in bins and I'm sort of like Mr. Green was, is talking on the for side, but not, oh, I just, there's different components. You put some bag and-
There is.
If you're neutral or not for or against, then you can certainly come up at that time.
Hi, I'm Julia Hancock. I live at five twenty-three North Morrison. My street attaches to North Shoneman. It's actually the same street, it just makes a little curve. And while this is a lovely proposal, going down to just one lane is going to make it hell for us trying to get out onto Newmark and head east, it's already bad. I've called the city before and said, are you going to put in a light there? My street comes out right next to seven eleven. That's a four-way that's used by police, ambulance, fire, people going to and from school. We have another housing development going in on our street. There's already accidents there all the time. People are hurt. Uh, cars are banged. You're trying to get in and out. And now you're going to make it down to one lane? Um, it's already a nightmare trying with the two. And one lane, you're going to slow down traffic and how are we going to get out? Put a stoplight there and I'm all for this project. But until then, we can't get out. It's, it's a nightmare. And I've lived there for twenty-seven years. I just paid off my house last month. So yay! And I don't want to have to move because I can't get out on my street. And a prior person in your position, um, when I called to complain about this twenty years ago, told me, well, there's nothing we can do. And instead of going down your street to get out, you should go down to Lakeshore and go out on Oak. Or if I was even, wanted to get out quicker, I should go down to McKay's to the light. And I said, so you're telling me you know this is a dangerous corner already? People have been hurt, killed, cars, everything. And he says, yes. And he says, and there's nothing we can do. Well, I'm saying if you put it down to one lane, it's going to make it worse because those of us trying to get out are already like, come on, you can do it. And then you're going to slow it down even more? And unless you're going to time those lights so there's a break in traffic, we aren't going to be able to get out of there. And I'm going to tell you, there's going to be more accidents. So I have a problem with this plan, the way it is. No one said, any of us, or let us know from behind on those back streets that this was even happening. Sorry, I don't get the newspaper or watch the news. So that's on my bad, that's my bad. But when I saw this come up on Facebook, I had to say something. I don't want to be in an accident when I'm eighty years old trying to make a left onto Newmark and head east from my street. Um, that's just me, you know? But anyways, just saying. I, I, I like the idea of beautification of Empire, that's great. But don't make it harder for those of us who actually live there to get in and out of our streets and to move, move around there.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Christine Moffett, seven hundred Denise Place in Empire. Um, I applaud the city for paying attention to Empire District. Um, it is often the forgotten place that has the most historical concept or, or context to it. And, um, it's, it's needs to be, um, supported. But this, uh, yeah, this proposal has several parts to it. And so, um, just as the, the, uh, person ahead of me talks about the issues of the areas of impact that are outside of your zone. And anytime you understand zoning and, and changes in planning, you have to consider what's going to happen outside that zone. It's great that you're focusing on this zone, but, but there really needs to be a context of, of how that works. Because I see if, if the narrowing, which is a great plan to give bike pass and everything, I'm totally supportive of that. But what if people decide that they're going to turn, just turn off and go down one of the alternative corridors? So you have to look at the big picture. Um, so applaud for doing what you're doing. The other thing is that, um, I live very close to the headquarters of the CT Clusi Tribe, which is, there's, there's this historical place. This is so important to them. I don't see much other than a few little bullets here and there that they're involved in this. And I think they need to be involved in this. Their new health care center is there. And of course, they had a big proposal years ago for how, what they would let to do to, for the Hollering Place and that they were forced to abandon that because of costs. Um, I really, I urge you to engage with them, please, before you pass all of this. Um, I know it's just a planning document, but I think it has big holes. The other thing is, uh, that, uh, Tom was mentioning, the importance of the, the access to the bay at the, at the Empire docks there. That's really important. And the idea of developing multiple dwellings or whatever there without regard to the important uses, um, of the estuary for recreation and boating and just plain, uh, wonderful rec- uh, understanding of the functions of an estuary. The other thing that I want to point out, which I think you're probably not very aware of, is that I follow the, uh, International Port of Cuse Bay and their proposal for a container project. That container project, and I'm going to pass around some visuals for you, is proposed to be at the other, across the Hollering Place. And if you look at the proposals put into the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for their proposal to, um, and I'm sure that Chelsea knows about this, their proposal to widen and deepen the Federal Navigation Channel, there's a turning, uh, area and I, I'd like to pass these around and, and hopefully you can interpret this. But the proposed turning basin literally almost comes up to the dock at Empire. So again, looking at adjacent things going on, what's happening, how this fits in everything else within this, this wonderful estuary that we all love and, and need. Um, I really urge you to back off, think about some of these things, engage with some of us that follow this information and think about this in your development plans. To me, uh, the, the prospects of a container port that would have enormous amount of sand and development on the bay at that point, um, is, is something that would, could be an affront to any of the cultural heritage components of this development. So I just, I really like your attention and it's great. You've had great community involvement. I, I, I applaud lots of this, but think, but ask you to po- pose- But ask you to pose and consider some of these additional components that are outside of this domain that you've been concentrating on. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next in opposition?
So I'm neutral. Steve Skinner. And been a member of the community coalition from the beginning. We're into 22 years, I believe. So anyway, there are two things. I understand the desire to drop the design codes. They've always been a bit of a problem. I understand the need for flexibility. I hope, when that happens, that there will be recognition on the part of the Planning Commission in particular, that it doesn't, you don't allow it to become a hodgepodge of architectural whatever out there. I don't know what the codes or requirements are for the waterfront down here. I assume there are some. But the older part and the museum and the Coos Bay Village all do have kind of a theme going. There was an effort to make things relatively harmonious. And I'm hoping that the same thing will happen in Empire. And we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So that's one observation that I would like to put into the hopper. The other thing is, I do support this lady. I would like to see the road diet happen, but we really need another traffic light at your street. The only traffic light now is at Wasson in downtown Empire. There's nothing before that. That particular intersection desperately needs one. So I would hope that there's a recognition of that and at least it be made a goal to work toward achieving that. Because she's absolutely right. And we've discussed this at CCE meetings at length, more about downtown. We actually changed the bike lanes to allow that, those turns to be, left turns to be made in downtown Empire. And, but yeah, you pointed out a weak spot, and it really should be addressed. That's about, otherwise, I'm in support, particularly with the waterfront.
Thank you very much.
We have, just real quick, when everybody is done in the room, we have Jim Barron's online. Who would like to talk?
Okay. Any other public comment?
And Dean Lundey. When my blood pressure gets up, I get a bloody nose. And I'm opposed on this plan. And I'm glad that I get a chance to say why. I own property next to the Sauce Brothers property. I bought the old Coos Bay Boat Building Center, which sticks out into the bay. And there's a nice chunk of dirt that I got permits and put some soil in there. And it's a good chunk of that area down there. And no one's really come down and said, "Hey, you know, Dean, what, you know, how's it going down here?" And I love it. I think it's absolutely magnificent, that river. I've never seen anything so beautiful in my life. But I have some opposition to this Newmark roadmap. I've been reading the most boring book in the world called Killed by Traffic Engineer. You know, for the bike stuff, okay? So these are some of my oppositions, or some of my views about that Newmark. The Ocean Boulevard coming into, coming into Newmark is a nightmare. You could do a whole plan just on that one crazy intersection. And the thing that, I didn't wanna say anything against it, but the mayor and the whole city council did something that I approved of, was pulling the permit for the Deveraux Center. It's in the wrong place. It's an attractive nuisance. It's attracting people from all over the place. And regular families feel scared to go in there a lot of times. There are criminals, they have weapons. I deal with them. Now they've put up a fence at the Deveraux Center. At 2:00, when they put that fence up, guess where those people go? Down the hill onto his property. We just got a whole nest out of there. You know, it's too, it's too beautiful an area. They leave the Deveraux Center with free food, free clothes, which is fine. But there's that magic forest right there by the cowboy bar. They go through that two-legged rat hole, through that fence. They go around to the dope dealer, and they're in our neighborhood. So that didn't, you know, I don't know if we've given them a more chance to keep that open, but I would love to see a better location for that service, the Deveraux Center. I don't think it's, okay, well, that intersection is the first one.
Yeah, thank you.
They're planning across from the Dolphin thing, they're planning a black, non-pervious parking lot. So all the water just goes right off, goes right down the road. And in doing that new parking lot, we don't have any electric car chargers, which is planning for the future, 'cause it's coming. And we lost a historic little library building. So we're not gaining anything through this project. We're losing. We're losing a historic library, we're losing pervious ground. You know, because between my property and the Sauce Brothers property is an actual natural spring that goes out into the water. And animals use it all the time. That's another thing that I've noticed. No electric car chargers. No policing the homeless after Deveraux closes. You know, somebody mentioned having a little substation for cops. No protected bike and walking paths up Newmark. The plan that they've adopted, I think, makes bicyclists make a left turn from the middle of the road on Newmark up to Wisconsin, and then go down this boring street down Wisconsin, and then make a left turn on Cape Arago. So those are two major problems for a bicyclist. Bicyclist left turns in the middle of the street is a bummer. So I would like to see the bike path just go right down Newmark, right down to my place, trip out, beautiful. You know, don't divert the bike path, 'cause it's too dangerous for bikes, and it's boring. Say? Michigan, yeah, yeah, Michigan. Open areas for dogs. Let the trucks come in, let their trailers during the fishing season, that they are now. But keep that area open, 'cause everybody loves their dogs. And that Hollering Place is fabulous for kite flying. Dogs, leave it open. Don't build anything down there. By my suggestions, move the Deveraux. It's an attractive nuisance. That Ocean Boulevard is a dangerous intersection. Bike paths, open areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. Do we have any others? Yes, sir.
Oh, Jim. Jim online.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening. I believe that the TSP, the Transportation Plan, had some comments made by people in Empire about traffic lighting in Morrison and down by 7-Eleven. That's something the city needs to work with ODOT and try to prioritize getting traffic signals at Morrison, where the Chevron station is, in Cranberry Sweets. If they can't do Morrison, then they need to go down and do 7-Eleven. That intersection is very dangerous. My interaction with people that run businesses along the Newmark corridor is the design review criteria. As a matter of fact, I'm looking at something Design Review is going to be looking at tomorrow over a building mural. And it's a ridiculous amount of paper. It has discouraged people expanding their buildings in that area. I can think of one project that the Planning Commission actually denied. Because the Design Review people denied it, which was about a decade ago, which was a huge expansion of the athletic club. And he wasn't going to follow those criteria, first of all, because it's way too expensive. And it's just a colossal pain overall. I'm very pleased to see that that's going away in this plan. I listened to Mr. Gould, and he did not rule out public purchase of that Sauce Brothers staff. It sounded to me like that door was also open. And I don't believe, taking the Hollering Place property, that small parcel down there, and removing the design controls on that, I don't think that limits the ability of the people in Empire to work with the state to get Marine Board funding to do an expansion of that parking lot for the fishing boats and a breakwater, which is in need down there. I also suspect that that pier is probably close to its useful life, even though it was extensively repaired recently. Overall, I'm in favor of this with one small thing. It is, to me, a living document. It's something that can be revisited. And there should be a Phase Two of this planning, which is how the urban renewal district will try to implement the multi-stage plan to install some of these features, and how the city will work with the state and our local state representatives to get funding to do some of this. I'm exceptionally pleased that we got rid of the absolutely commercial on the first floor. That opens up some opportunities, particularly on housing. So overall, I'm very in favor of this. There are some minor things to tweak, but they are, in my view, things that we have to work with the state on, the traffic lights. We also need to work with the state to expand the parking down there at the Hollering Place, to take care of those fishing boats. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the matter? Okay, and we have all written comments received to date are included in the record?
Yes.
Okay, any staff response?
Yeah, I'll just touch on a couple of things. So there was some concern that the code changes for the Hollering Place specifically is going to make it, you know, X out the potential for expanded parking and maybe food trucks or pop-up markets. It actually does the opposite. It actually opens up that opportunity. 'Cause today, the Hollering Place Zone District is very particular about what can happen on that property. And by establishing that, all the same uses, which are public, commercial parking lots, food, you know, type businesses, retail, service, can happen there, that allows even that type of use. So it's not an attempt to nix that vision or expanded parking. It's just an attempt to make it it and/or something else permanent, whether it's parking for boats or something else possible. And it is true that, so that's still on the table. And the Oregon State Marine Board is certainly a funder of that. But you know, if and when the city wants to pursue it, and that will be, if the council adopts the plan, then they can start checking off these projects. Do we wanna do that? Okay, what's the path? That can still be looked at. Access to the bay, considering the estuary. Nothing's changing in what's allowed in the estuary on the waterfront today. All of that remains. So we've not tried to impact any of those allowed uses. The port container shipping facility, that is something that this plan can't really account for or change. I mean, if it comes, it comes. It's on the other side. We still have the same uses allowed in the estuary on this side of the water and still have the same access to recreation on the water. Nothing changes. The lane reconfiguration and concerns about safety and the impacts. To date, all of the information that we've received as far as traffic crashes or fatalities and all of that, we've had our transportation engineer review, and none of it has risen, while it's very important to know that those things are happening, none of it has risen to the threshold that says you need a street light. Having said that, that doesn't preclude the city from ever in the future putting one in there. It's something that certainly would need to be funded. But we're not precluding that possibility. We're just saying at this time, nothing warrants that. And yes, while you would see an impact of a delay if you were to make these lane configurations, it's not below the accepted level of service that the city's adopted. So while it may make those people a little more, they're sitting there, you know, for a minute or two or more, whatever, it is longer. It's not below the acceptable level of service. Yeah, and that, I think, yeah, I agree. I don't disagree. It is a long time. But throughout the whole, kind of, the whole day, what a traffic engineer has found is it's not, that one instance is not always the case. But yes, that probably is a peak hour, 10 minutes, and nobody wants to do that. And so again, this is a plan. It is a vision. It's not anything that's gonna happen tomorrow. And when and if the city starts looking at development, things can change. Just because this doesn't include a street light, or it says X, doesn't mean that it might shift a little in design. And then, the bike lanes. There was some talk about this, you know, really wanting to follow the Oregon Coast bike route, bring bicyclists through the corridor. And doing, and that remains true. It is still a designated Oregon Coast bike route throughout Newmark. We can't change that. But the cross-section of the street in that main corridor is such that we'd have to remove, I believe, on-street parking, turning lane, all of it, just to accommodate bikes. And that was, that was beyond what was acceptable by the public in the planning of this process. So there was an alternative route proposed, I believe, by the coalition, bring it on off to the side street. Michigan was looked at by the traffic engineer as kind of the most reasonable, because it's improved. It has the wide enough cross-section to accommodate bike lanes. And so that would just kind of be a local reroute. The city could always still consider additional options. Again, it's just a plan and a guiding document. And then last but not least, the tribes were consulted. We actually met, myself with the consultant, met with the tribal council, the Confederated Tribes of the Coos, Lower, Amquon, Tsavo Indians. And the consultant talked with representatives from the Coquon Indian Tribe. So they have been, you know, we solicited their input, and all of the input that they wanted to provide is in the plan. So I think those are the things I just wanted to touch on after comments.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for Chelsea? And so before any, like, to get to the road diet thing, there would be a specific, like, traffic impact analysis before anything like that happened. And everything would be, so, so again, everything in this report is gonna require further change or study before it could actually go through with further public input at that time. This is kind of a, just a... Yeah, it's just kind of a, this is what we think would look good, and, but we can't flesh out every single idea and study everything. It's just kind of a, this looks good on paper, this sounds good, this has received a lot of support, but we'll study it further before any action is actually able to go forward.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, any further questions before we close the hearing? Okay. I now close this public hearing in the record at 7:10 p.m. Any Planning Commission deliberation?
Well, yeah, I think we're off to a good start on this. It's, it's certainly not a, not a done deal. I think there's some, some information that we need to add that, that, just this evening, with the, with the, with the stoplight, and also the thing about the boat ramp down there. Those are all issues that have to be worked out. I was assuming that this waterfront, the, taking out the waterfront design standards is good for all that area, all the way from Sauce through, to, from Hollering Place to there through Sauce. That part, I personally think is, is probably improvement and would probably be okay. I am disappointed tonight that we didn't see some more information on what you could do with that area down there with Empire. I submitted four ideas to Jim, and nothing has come of that. I think that, let's face it, that the street only goes one way, to the ocean and to the beaches. And to not use some sort of nautical theme in Empire is just foolish. It's a missed opportunity. That guy's not from here. He doesn't understand that. But there's, there's several things that could happen. Will Wright's lot, the Acoustical Mirror, fantastic idea. Should, should be looked at. We can't just, just sweep that under the rug. That's a good idea. I don't know if you know what it is, but anyway. And there was, there were several, several other ideas, and these were, these were a 30-minute brainstorm on my part. I, unless I see more of that from the landscape architect that does this thing, that drew this, I, I really feel that we are undersold on this project. This was, this is design 101 for ideas. Throw out a dozen ideas. Maybe some of them, ODOT will say, well, no, you can't do that. You can't make a, a waving, a waving street. Well, you tell me why not. It's a, it's a perfect example. It's going across the bar. You talk about a 10-foot, 10-foot swell at eight seconds, you know, whatever. There's, there's some really good ideas that can happen there, and they need to be, somebody needs to think outside the box here and do something to make Empire special. You know, Bandit has done that. Florence has done that. We can do that here. So I was really kind of unhappy to see, this is basically kind of the same dog and pointy show we saw on Front Street. It's happening here on this one. That's okay. I agree with, with, with the, with the attachments here that we talked about earlier. That makes a lot of sense, and I, I think it's wonderful to free up some of the development standards down there. But, and it may, it may be the frosting on the cake here, but I think you really need to get something established to give Empire some, some notoriety. Give them a theme. Make it a place to go, not a place just to go through on your way to the beach. So that was my only, my only frustration with what, with what we saw here.
Who would do that?
Who would?
Who would develop that, that, that focus?
Well, I gave them four ideas, and that was a half an hour. I could probably give them another 10.
I mean, if it's somebody that could, who can make it work?
Commission.
We can approve.
Oh, well, okay, there's, yeah, there's.
Chelsea has a comment.
Sure.
I was just going to add, I think one of the ways that they tried to address that was through a recommendation to look at a wayfinding signage plan. And so that would be kind of like a next step, a phase two. We go out and find funding to complete a wayfinding signage plan that would develop this theme for the area and how it would be implemented into sign. So I think that's one way they tried to incorporate that. So that is in the plan. It's just a next phase. We need funding, and we'd have a whole nother public process and get more input.
And I think it was, I think it was Mr. Barron's comment about, you know, this, this is a living. Yeah, sorry. This, these reports like this, they're, they're a living document, right? And they're, they're only as good as what you do with them. So I think it's, it's a good start, and it's a, it's kind of a launching point. But I think all of these, these items are going to be fleshed out in greater details as we move forward with, with specific portions. I think you've got a, you can't cover every scenario and every, you know, you can't nail it down too tight as your first go at it, right? And I think, I think as we, as we focus in, hopefully it'll, all those things will be discussed further and, and, because, because nothing in this binds or, or even really allows for much to happen without further action, amending code or, or doing stuff. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there, I think there'll be plenty of time to, to really get into the details on this.
Okay, well, we'll wait and see.
Do we have any, any other discussion there? I believe to move this forward, we'll need to make a motion recommending council action, one way or the other.
Well, I'm kind of leaning towards a continuance myself. I think there's, there's a lot of questions here that, that may need answers. So Chelsea, tell the commission here, if, if we were to approve this, what happens then?
Your recommendation? You could certainly make a recommendation that council adopt the plan with the caveat that they consider adding some kind of statement about a stoplight at Shonam, and I, I'll tell you, that's been vetted and talked about throughout the past year. But if you certainly have the, the ability to say, hey, we want you to further consider a planning for a stoplight at this location, and we want you to further consider expanded boat ramp facilities, you could make a recommendation to adopt the plan with those caveats, if those are what are important to you, or anything else, and then approve the text amendments by ordinance. And then this will go to council, and then they will further consider that and say, okay, we hear this is what Planning Commission is recommending. And, and we can have the consultant, go back to the consultant before that time and either build in those recommendations as part of a draft or.
Okay, so we've got the, the stoplight and the expanding the boat ramp. Was there any other thing that should be included in that?
And.
What you said.
Your statement.
Your statement's about having more, something of a nautical theme.
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah.
It gives a design element.
You know, I, honestly, I had fun with that. You could do so much with, you know, red light, green light, right of way. Yeah, there, and, and there's, and one of the ideas, if they're actually going to put a roundabout down there, which I don't know that's a great idea. Well, if they did, don't just make it one of these roundabouts that you see, you see in a city. Put a lighthouse in, put a, put a lighthouse, not a keeper, but put some, put something up there and make it, yeah, make it, make it look like it, like it has a purpose.
And, and I, I think we're, what I, I think we're getting kind of too detailed for our, for our first, for our fast, first pass at this. I, I think, I think that those are great ideas, but I, I really think that the initial kind of needs to be this kind of higher-level, broad, broad view of things. And I, I like the idea of, of maybe that, that motion with the, the community concerns and the commission concerns appended to that. I assume there'll also be opportunity for public comment at the city council meeting before action's taken on this by the council. So that, that will be another avenue for, for the specific concerns to probably go to that city council meeting as well and, and make sure that there were that issue.
Okay, okay, Josh, would, Josh and Bill, would you buy this? I would like to make a motion that we recommend to city council the approval of this 187-2400174 PLNG, the Empire Blueprint, with the conditions that we have a nautical theme looked into, the expansion of boat ramp, and a stoplight at 7-Eleven.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We will move on.
And real quick, before we go, I just want to say next step, so that those here know. So Planning Commission's recommendation, as you just heard, will be forwarded to the city council. We intend to have a work session on October 22nd, where it'll be discussed, followed by a public hearing on November 5th, here in council chambers. Yes. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any commissioner comments?
November 5th, Tuesday. Oh, sorry, October 22nd.
Six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock in council chambers.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm.
Yes.
I had an issue with the, with planning, but that's, that's okay. I think it's best to leave that live for tonight.
Okay. Any staff comments?
Um, I just wanted to touch on, I believe it was Mike, who mentioned the Resolution 2101 and the street standards. This staff is currently putting together a recommendation, gathering information and putting together a recommendation and hope to bring that to council as soon as possible. So it's being, still being considered, and changes are forthcoming, so it's not dead yet. Yep. And otherwise, I'll just note that I think the planner will try, for commission, try to work on giving you a regular kind of update of what's happening in planning. So that might come either electronically or at a meeting, just a heads up.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I personally would appreciate that.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. I think that's it. We'll adjourn the, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.